...forum featuring the candidates who are running for the primary election for city council for the city of New Hope. I am Patsy Green. I am president of the League of Women Voters for the Crystal New Hope East Plymouth-Robinsdale Chapter, and I am a resident of New Hope. The League of Women Voters is proud of its history of citizen education in our communities and provides these forums to help you make informed decisions about local elections. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We view, the views of the candidates are their own. We do not assume responsibility for the contents of the candidate's statements. We want to thank CCX Media for their assistance and the City of New Hope for the use of their council chambers. Candidates have drawn for order, and they will speak for three minutes of their vision for the city of New Hope. A timer will assist the candidates. There are five candidates. We have three candidates in the chambers tonight. Following that, members of the audience may ask questions of all, or may ask questions of individual or all candidates. Please write your questions on one of the cards provided and hand it to the League members. We do not take questions from the floor. Questions submitted online up to the day before the forum will also be included. All candidates may answer any question whether or not it was directed to them. Candidates may take up to one minute to answer. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have up to one minute for concluding statement. Now I would like to introduce Kathy Pedersen as our moderator. She is a resident of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. I want to welcome the audience and the three candidates who are with us this evening. There is an individual who could not attend this evening, but he has sent a statement. And so after the opening statements of the three candidates present, I will read his statement for the audience both at home and here. We will begin our opening statements with candidate John Elder.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Elder, and I'm your city councilman. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the tireless work that you do, including these forums. You do a lot. I have lived in New Hope since I was first married in 1988, 34 years. As I talk to more people throughout the community, I found out that I'm still really a newcomer. The amount of people that have been in the residence for 40-plus years is incredible. New Hope is an amazing city with award-winning parks, great roads, first-class emergency services, and a community development team that's working hard to ensure that housing stock continues to go up and has made strong plans for the future. What this amounts to is 95 hard-working, full-time employees with scores of part-time employees who are committed to making New Hope a great city. In 2008, there was a vacancy on the New Hope City Council as one of the council members was moving out of state. I applied along with 10 other people. I tested, interviewed, and was appointed. I was honored. Since then, I've been an integral part of this community, a volunteer at a local place of worship, a soccer coach, a scout leader, a member of one of the watershed commissions, a member of the 281 Government Advisory Committee, a board member to West Metro Fire District, and a founding board member for the New Hope Community Farmers Market. I have worked hard for this community that I love, and now that I have more time, I'm looking forward to continued service. That said, when I got onto the city council in 2008, things were not great. Other council members and I worked hard to address the challenges that were before us. Staff was leaving in droves, financial audits were showing inadequacies, and morale was exceptionally low. Through hard work of that council and many councils thereafter, we have things well at hand. We have moved away from bonding, and we're now doing a pay-as-you-go financing system. Employee retention is high, and our annual audits are flawless. Long-range plans have been made for the coming needs in both our pavement and infrastructure funds. Each director has a 10-year budget draft that we all work off of. Our city looks better than ever, but don't be fooled, we still have work to do. We will work to make this a better place. The Curb Appeal Program is just one great example of a small stimulus package that helps residents to improve the look of their homes. Whereas this is just one program, there are many ways the city is working with residents. I could go on for hours, but I only have three minutes. Again, my name is John Elder, and I'm asking for your vote for New Hope City Council.
Thank you, candidate Elder. Our next candidate is Jonathan London.
Hello. I'm Jonathan London. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and CCX Media for organizing this evening's forum. I have lived in New Hope for more than four decades and have been honored to have served the residents of New Hope for the last eight years on the city council. Many improvements have been made in this time, and I have been a major catalyst for improvement and accountability. Since my initial run for the city council in 2014, we have made significant progress improving the vitality of New Hope through increased property values, stronger long-term infrastructure management, new single-family housing, and business redevelopment. I am most proud of the following accomplishments: the scattered-site housing program, the city performance management report, smart objectives for directors and staff, the New Hope Police Annual Report, the 10-year rolling street maintenance program, the city center redevelopment, the Xylon Avenue Streetscape, more effective ordinance enforcement, the Northwood Park-Northwood Storm Management, or Storm Water Management project, reduction in debt levels and issuance, and stronger accounting controls and greater cost accounting analysis. While we have made improvements in many areas, the city is still challenged with repetitive ordinance violators, significant 911 calls, aged city infrastructure, commercial buildings and residential housing. Many of these challenges can be improved on. My future goals are for greater fiscal responsibility, effective and accountable public safety, proactive ordinance enforcement, continued housing and business redevelopment, and ensuring a strong transition of the next city manager. I ask for your primary vote on Tuesday, August 9th. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Michael Daley, the second.
Thank you. I want to thank League of Women Voters for putting on this event, and CCX Media, and everyone that took the time out of their busy schedules to be here and to tune in. This is my first time running for city office as a city council member. I decided to run because I know that there's, while the city is doing quite well at the moment, there's always room for progress. So I decided that that's something that I feel like I could contribute to. I studied communication and culture and telecommunications at Indiana University, and I currently manage a very fast-paced, busy restaurant. And I've been doing so for quite some time. I have been a resident of New Hope for five years. I moved to Minnesota 10 years ago. I lived in Robinsdale for the first five years I was here, and then I moved to New Hope. And I really enjoy both cities. I think there's a great partnership between the cities in this area, and I think that's something that can also be built upon and expanded as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to read a statement from candidate Don Seiler. He was unable to be with us this evening, and he sent a statement which I will read now. "I am running for New Hope City Council because I believe New Hope is a good place to live, and I would like to help keep it that way. Having lived here for four years, I will provide a fresh look at the city and its operations. People need to be able to feel safe and secure in the city, including housing, jobs, education, and public safety. Some of the important issues include keeping housing affordable and keeping the city fiscally responsible. Regarding housing, I would like to keep a close eye on the number of corporations or investment funds buying up family properties. Next, fiscal responsibility will involve looking at the highest costs of the city, including the police department. I have concerns about the next city manager potentially being the former head of that department. It seems like a conflict of interest at best, and will require keeping a close eye on upcoming budgets. Finally, considering recent news, I would like to see New Hope join the forefront of cities calling for codified abortion rights. Please feel free to reach out with any questions to my campaign email address, donseiler4cc@gmail.com." You have now heard the opening statements of the three candidates running for New Hope City Council who are on the primary ballot in August. It is now time for the audience questions. The audience may continue to write, and raise your hand for a League member to collect your questions during the forum. Questions may be directed at an individual candidate or to all candidates, and each candidate can respond to any question. If a question is directed to a specific candidate, the other candidates will be given a chance to respond briefly. It is our intention to select questions that represent the interests expressed by the members of our audience and those who submitted questions prior to this forum using our email site or by phone. We do reserve the right to consolidate questions if there are several on one issue, so that many issues as possible may be covered during this period. Questions will be answered in a rotating order. Candidates, please limit your responses to one minute, and we have a timer that will indicate to you when your time is up. We will begin with the first candidate to answer the first question, which came to us by email, and the first candidate to answer that will be John Elder, candidate Elder. The question is, "With the current robust bull housing market, is it still necessary for city funds to be used to subsidize the quote-unquote 'scattered-site housing' program in the city of New Hope? Shouldn't the open market be buying delinquent, condemned, or repossessed homes?"
Thank you. The challenge with that is we have not seen that these homes are being purchased and being, what we're seeing is these homes are being purchased and flipped. And a home that may be worth $160,000 is turning around and having bare minimum work done to it, and the house is then turning around and being sold for $180,000. What's happening with the scattered-site program, we've had 85 projects since this started in 1995. And what happens is they, we buy the land, we subsidize it, the house usually gets torn down, and a much newer, or much nicer home is put in. We're having our houses on scattered site going for $400,000, $450,000. It's greatly increasing the availability of higher-end homes in New Hope. Thank you.
Candidate London.
Thank you. I have already told city staff that I'll take them out to dinner if and when the open market starts to acquire housing in the city of New Hope, tear them down, and speculatively build new, higher-end homes. The challenge is that many of the scattered-site homes are in challenging areas. They're challenging lots. We're going to have one right on the corner of 42nd, we'll have two homes, but right on the corner of 42nd and Boone. And that's not necessarily the top choice when it comes to residential housing. So what we're trying to do is update many dilapidated homes throughout the city. We've done a fantastic job. It's elevated the pricing of all homes in the city. It has a contagious impact, and if and when we get the open market to start doing these things, you can bet I'll be saying to stop putting taxpayers' money to work. Thank you.
Mr. Daley.
I have some knowledge of the scattered homes. I know that they're losing money initially. I would really have to crunch the numbers to see what they're bringing back in in tax dollars, but I highly doubt it's enough to make up for the loss. So, I mean, I would have to look into it further, but I do believe that it's creating a loss for the city. So it would be something to consider to let the open market start to even out, because houses are selling for quite a bit more than they were before. And if people are buying them and revamping them, I think that might be a better situation in the long run.
Thank you. The next question will be directed, because we're going to do it in a rotational order, the next question will be to candidate London, and then the rest will follow suit. What do you see as the top two priorities for the city in the next four years? Do you have specific solutions?
Thank you. Well, I think the first that I would say is really trying to get the budget and the tax rates down. That comes with significant challenges in trying to work with the other council members and city staff, who are often not incentivized to try and reduce spending. We've struggled to reduce spending on my time on the council. So I would say that, I think that that's the overarching priority. The second priority is to continue with public safety, and with that includes a new police chief and potentially the new city manager to oversee things. And there's still some question as to how this will all play out. As you know, many, we have a six-month trial period for their acting city manager. So those are my two. Thank you.
Okay. The same question will go to you, Mr. Daley.
I do see a very big problem with property taxes as well. Obviously, everybody wants to save some money as far as paying taxes goes. So I think the current system is flawed at best. I know my taxes went up well more than the rate of inflation, which I don't think that should be how it works. I do believe that some of the increases in property taxes should reflect sales or home sales in the area, but I don't think it should mirror that. So I think there needs to be more thought put into home values to decide how much property taxes are going to increase. Also, I think that a big thing in, this is, I'm being cut off, but I think we need to become more environmentally friendly.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Elder.
Thank you. Public safety is obviously a great concern. That touches every one of our lives, communities we live in for safety. We need to make sure that we're staying abreast with technology, we're staying abreast of the law changes. The way that our department's being operated right now, there's great men and women working at this department that are very customer-focused oriented. So that's one of the things. Second is our serious issue with, that we're having with inflow and infiltration. Right now, we are making headway. We're lining sanitary sewers. We are working to ensure that our roads are properly paved, that we're not having infiltration through that. There's a lot of things that we can do, and the Met Council is holding a big hammer over our head with a big fine amount if we don't. And so this is something we really need to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next question will go to you, candidate Daley, and then we'll follow with the rest. This one's on New Hope Parks. "I am very happy about our parks and recreation programs, but what can New Hope do better?"
I personally think that there's a, New Hope does have a great park system. I know, I did see that they received an award, I believe that was yesterday, or two days ago, three days ago, Monday. Yeah, on Monday, they received an award for being an outstanding park system. So I think that's great. I do think that we could look at more community support and programs for children and adults alike, just to expand the systems that are in place and do more with the community, working with programs within the park department.
Thank you.
Could you re-ask the question, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I better go back and get it. This one's on New Hope Parks. "I am very happy about our parks and recreation programs, but what can New Hope do better?"
Thank you. Our park program is truly second to none. We have 16 parks, two baseball complexes, we have jewels in our crown of the ice arena and of our swimming complex. It's remarkable. The one thing that I would like to see, and I don't know how it's done, but is a stronger community engagement. Don't get me wrong, we had 1,800 people at the pool one day last week. It's, I mean, we're doing, they're doing great work, but, and I know a lot of their stuff is based on multi-generational planning and programming, but additional community engagement, I think, would just even boost that even more. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate London.
Thank you. I'm actually, I'm looking at the performance management report and SMART goals that I asked to be put into place in 2015, and it's something that we use to benchmark our city against others. And that's really what I think is most critical, is benchmarking against the gold standards. 72% of the people in New Hope think that our rec programs and facilities are excellent or good. But I will say, I do get numerous calls for things to be done that are not being done. We're giving $500,000 a year to pay off an energy bond at the ice arena. So the parks and recs get about $1 million a year. One of them that has been pushed is a stronger pickleball program here in New Hope compared to what's been done in Golden Valley and surrounding cities. And I was just recently by a park in Golden Valley, and each day they have probably 20 or 30 cars playing pickleball. So it's benchmarking is really the key. Thank you.
Question number four. Would you talk about, and this I will be going to Mr. Elder, candidate Elder, would you talk about the pluses and/or minuses about New Hope's business climate?
We have some fantastic businesses. Because of New Hope being New Hope, we got the first Hy-Vee in the metro. There's a lot of businesses that are coming to town. It is in a very positive position. I will tell you that I am greatly disheartened by what I'm seeing in our strip malls, large vacancies, things that you're seeing that are a dime a dozen that you get anywhere. They're not real destination stores. That said, we can't make these owners of these complexes, we can't make them bring in particular businesses. And so that's one of the challenges. They have a very strong business networking group, and I know they're working towards those solutions. Thank you.
Candidate London.
Thank you. New Hope's business community or business climate is definitely improving. We have two 100-plus-year-old businesses in New Hope and a handful of fantastic, award-winning restaurants. However, one of the biggest challenges that we do have is the size of the city and the facilities in which to operate in. As I mentioned in my opening statements, we have aging buildings and, in our commercial district along 169, they're only conducive for certain types of businesses. One of the things I'd like to see is staff attempt to try and put together a way in which to bring some property owners together to attract a very large business, an S&amp;P 500-type business, like across the street, Northrop Grumman, Medtronic, Abbott. That would really bring some attention to New Hope.
Candidate Daley.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree that there's a lot of great businesses in the city. I do think that there could be some projects to entice more businesses to come to the city, possibly beautification processes, projects on some of those strip malls that are starting to deteriorate, might bring things in, but like they were saying, the strip malls probably aren't set up for a lot of the businesses that would make a huge difference in the city. But I do believe that it's, there's a lot of diverse businesses as of now, and there's room for improvement there as well.
All right. The next question will be directed to candidate London first. "How will you keep residents connecting to city happenings?"
Thank you. Well, I think you kind of have to try and meet people where they're at. And we've been trying to meet, we have a wide range of residents in New Hope. Some probably sit on their phone 10 hours plus a day. And for them, I think social media and, you know, it could be Facebook, it could be Twitter, it could be emails, it could be various texts, you know, things you sign up for to get notified. But many people are not on social media or on their computer or phone all day. And this is where we need to be able to continue to use the pipeline, our quarterly mailings and newsletters, so that those residents can receive hard copies of the schedules, the calendars, things that are going on. And that way, you know, we're trying to meet as many people as possible through various means. Thank you.
Candidate Daley.
I think that expanding the social media networks for the city is probably the main focus, should be the main focus. I believe that 90-plus percent of the population is going to be on their phones at some point throughout the day, checking their emails. So if they're getting those updates in the emails, I think that should be the main focus. I think that's the future, that's the present. I don't think printing out and sending out a lot of paper and other products like that is going to be as effective. So I think it's stick with social medias.
Candidate Elder.
Thank you. The city currently has a Facebook account, an Instagram account, and the New Hope Police Department has a Facebook account. We have commissions, we have three commissions, the planning commissions, the Citizens Advisory Commission, and the Human Rights Commission, where people serve on these commissions and get information out to the residents, as well as they're an advisory board to the city council. The Police Department and Human Rights Commission goes out into the community, and I love this, they go out to large areas. Maybe it's going to be a park, maybe it's going to be an apartment complex, they go out and they grill. go out and they grill. And they're in meeting with people, they're talking to people, they're meeting people where they're at. And you have to do that because this building is intimidating for some people. And it's our way of getting out and not only sharing what this city is about, but what's happening within the city. And that needs to continue, and I'd like to see it expand as well.
All right. This is our last question. It will be directed to candidate Daley. Current yard materials are not picked up even although we are paying you. What can the city do about our yard waste?
I believe that I'm having this issue myself with the yard waste and recycling at the moment, so I think that there needs to be consideration for other companies that can do a better job, if that's what needs to happen to get the job done. They definitely, I know there's probably a contract in place, but if that job isn't being completed, the contract's probably not as solid as it would be if they were doing the job that was being tasked to them. I think the excuses have been staffing. I think that that's just an excuse at this point. I think that people are working. I think that everything should be pretty well-staffed at this point. People are back to work, so I don't think that we can keep accepting excuses like that they can't find the people to work.
All right. Candidate Elder.
It's frustrating, just to be very honest. I think I've gotten more calls on this than almost anything as of late. People are getting charged fuel surcharges for trucks that aren't even coming around. That borders on theft. We're getting charged for something that we're not getting. This, these businesses hold a license with the city, and I think we need to start looking at their license and start looking to see if in fact there's something the city can do, because they're not fulfilling their promise to the city and to the residents. And I know that we looked at localized or combined garbage pickup, and, you know, we shied away from it, but I don't know if that would be one way to ensure that some vendor would in fact deliver what they promised, because it's not acceptable.
Candidate London.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, I only have a minute, and this topic requires a half hour. Yard waste and rolling into solid waste removal in the city, we discussed this at length, and I'll throw out, I think about 65% of the residents are in favor of an organized hauling system, if it reduces costs. And I'm pretty sure that that can be done. I was one, I'll go on record right now, I was one of five that was in favor of an organized system. It didn't go anywhere, and it likely won't go anywhere until we see different people on the council. I think we have to, again, as Councilmember Elder said, we have to be able to pull their license. There's no accountability. And I'm for accountability, and we don't have any authority other than taking their license away, which seems a little severe in these instances. But this is happening on my block. Two of the four haulers around my name, around my house seem to pick it up each week or every other week. The other two can't get it done. So it's happening, but I don't, that's what I like to say.
All right. Thank you. We have now reached the final segment of the form. When each candidate has one minute to give a closing statement, we will begin in reverse order from the opening statements. And that means we will begin with candidate Daley.
Thank you. I would just like to, again, thank everyone for taking the time out of their day to be here. I just want to say that I appreciate any support that I could get. I do have a Facebook page that you can reach out and kind of see where all my views and ideas are, that I will keep updated. So, yeah, I just, that's all I really have. I just wanted to thank everyone for their time.
All right. Candidate London.
Thank you. Thank you to League of Women Voters for organizing this event again tonight, and CCX. Please do go to 411.org, www.411.org, or vote411.org, I apologize. And there you can find more information on your entire ballot. It's important that everyone vote and that everyone is informed. You can find information on me on my Facebook page, Jonathan D. London for New Hope City Council, or you can just simply Google my name and New Hope. You'll find plenty. There'll be plenty of newspaper clippings, commentary when I've run in the past. My Facebook page has eight years of my postings, which you are more than, you know, happy to question me on. I'm for effectiveness and balance and accountability, and that's what I hope to bring, and I hope to ask again for your vote Tuesday, August 9th. Thank you.
And finally, but certainly not least, is candidate Elder.
Thank you. As I've spoken tonight, I'm sure my love for this city is evident. We live in a great community, and that isn't by accident. That didn't happen by chance. We still have work to do. And as far as giving credit where credit's due, I see in our audience previous and current city council members, so thank you for your services. We have work to do. I'm committed to do that work and to continue to go shoulder-to-shoulder with city staff as we plow through the issues and challenges that face us. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for allowing us tonight, having us, and doing this for the community. Your work is always appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I ask for your vote.
After the primary, the two candidates with the most votes will be on the November general election ballot. At this time, I want to thank all the candidates and the audience members here and at home for their part in this forum for the New Hope City Council tonight. And now, I will turn the rest of the form back to Patsy Green, our president, for closing comments.
Thank you, and I want to thank the candidates that were in attendance tonight, and the one candidate that was, did send in an opening statement. I just want to correct one thing. Four of the five candidates moved to the general election in November to fill two at-large This is not a partisan race, so you will be voting for two candidates, and they will be listed not under any political party, they will be listed under the City of New Hope City Council race. As was stated, the primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And you can vote at the polls, or early voting has opened. It started June 24th, runs through August 8th. You can vote by absentee voting from home, which is safe and confidential. You may request an absentee ballot. Call your New Hope City office at 763-531-5117, or apply online at vote411.org or mnvotes.org. I want to just reiterate what was stated about Vote 411. I encourage the candidates to go out and fill out the city council survey on there, and then I encourage all voters to go to Vote 411 for all the information you could get on all the races that you will be voting on, either in this primary race or on the general election. There are, there's more information out in the hallway about that. You can pick that up in the hallway. If you are not a registered voter, you have until July 21st to register in advance of the primary and have your name on the roll when you go in to vote. Otherwise, you go to mnvote.com and register online. You need your driver's license or the last four digits of your social security number. You may register at the polls on the day of the election if you have been a resident of the state for at least 20 days before the election. You need a valid receipt for any utility bill showing your correct address in the precinct. You may also register accompanied by a registered voter in that precinct, who will take an oath, along with the election judge, that you qualify to vote in that precinct. And our last thought, if a member of this cable TV audience feels an issue has not been adequately addressed, League of Women Voters urges you to contact the candidates directly. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government. They work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence its public policy through education and advocacy. Membership is open to men and women of all ages, and for more information, you may visit That stands for League of Women Voters, Crystal, New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, and yes, we have the longest name of all leagues in the state. Tonight's form link will be replayed on CCX Media, and links will be posted, once they are released, they will be given to the city and to League of Women Voters to be posted, and then candidates will have access to that. We ask that anybody who posts the link, please do it in its entirety and do not take anything out of context. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you very much for those in attendance, those that are watching online, and those that will be watching between now and August 9th. Please remember to vote. Good night.